I'm going to call the Select Board meeting to order for Wednesday, April 24th, 2024. And as required by open meeting law, hereby inform you that the town will be video and audio taping as well as live broadcasting the public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or audiotape this meeting must notify the chair prior to the start of the meeting.
Madam Chair, if I could, and looking in the direction of the clerk, so you are expected to have a full quorum when Select Board Member Handler comes in from a prior meeting.
Right.
However, that given that you do not have a quorum yet, this would not be treated as a meeting. However, your agenda talks about the fact that board members would be discussing the warrant. Certainly, staff is here to do the same. I believe we are still on safe ground to have a discussion on the warrant, so to speak.
Perfect, thank you.
But we would not consider this yet to be a Select Board meeting.
Right, thanks. Thanks for that clarification. And on that, we're really just here tonight to take questions on the current warrant. If anybody in particular wants to get up with any questions, feel free. That's the point of this meeting tonight. Do you have anything else you want to say in terms of...
Yes, please. So I believe everyone knows that the warrant has been published in the Cape Cod Chronicle. That is the last major legal hurdle. That's the requirement to post it. So that insert was in last Thursday's Cape Cod Chronicle. The actual books themselves, we are scheduled to receive them from our printer, Cape Cod Tech, later this week. And we will have both the warrant books, the FinCom recommendation insert, and the motions book available. All of this is already posted online, so anyone can certainly get that information right away. And books will also obviously be available the night of town meeting when the voters check in. We'll be making supplies available at the community center, town hall, and the cultural center to start.
Great, thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Is it appropriate that I make a public announcement?
Well, is it about your forum that you're going to have?
Yes.
Sure, go ahead.
So I'm Patrick Otten, East Harwich. I am holding the final last public forum at the Cultural Center, 204 Sisson Road, to discuss the five citizens petitions. It'll be Sunday, April 28th, at 1:00 at the Cultural Center. So I hope, and it's a wide open open discussion. People give the pros and cons, so it's very beneficial for everyone to come. So, thank you.
Is that in the library, Patrick?
It has been, but then the library was scheduled, so there'll be signs.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions on any specific articles? John?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. John Chori, one of the three going road. I have just a bunch of questions on a lot of the articles, but they're small questions, not in great depth questions. And I didn't know how you were going to proceed tonight. I don't know if you're going to start with Article 1, you know, go down through them and just ask the audience if anyone has a question, one, two, and then when I got to my question on the first one, which is Article 15, again, it's just a small question.
Yeah, go ahead. I think that's fine.
I mean, I don't want to take up the whole night here.
Nobody else jumped to get up?
Yes, I...
And if you have a lot of questions, why don't you join us at the table? You can sit down.
Again, they're small questions, but it's, I mean, one of those things that, you know, if you asked a question, maybe else someone's thinking the same question. I didn't want to get into the operating budget because that would probably take the whole night. So I just wanted to say that.
Do you see the size of Joe's book? Think we can answer the question.
Well, it's a great book. I wonder if the FinCom got a hold of the book like that. You know, we did it one time, get a smaller rendition of that book, but that's a great book, I'm sure. Okay, the first question is Article 15. It's on the pool. And I was just questioning, have we come, has anyone come up? I know it's a private petition, but a cost estimate on what something like this would cost. I see it in there. Last time was 18 million. That was in 2018. We're in 2024. Has anyone come up with a number that's close that we can talk about? You know, how can you vote on a question when you don't know what you're voting on?
I would share the same concern. And if the petitioner is here, maybe he'd be willing to answer that question.
Yeah, I might as well have Patrick talk about the point of his article.
Sure. Good evening. Thanks, John, for your question on petition, Article Number 15. The question is whether or not residents would like to have a community pool in Harwich. I am going to make a motion, when that petition is open, to remove the word Olympic. So this is simply asking the question, would you like to have a pool? All of the details, how, where, when, why, when, costs before, costs before, after, costs during, will be determined by a feasibility study, once we have public opinion, if people would like to have a pool. Does that help, John?
Yes and no. I mean, yes, you answered the question, and no is, it seems like we're having a tendency in this town to vote on things without fully understanding the impact, financial impact, and operating impacts of things.
So just to point out, this is a petitioner's article.
Yeah, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, no, I'm just making that clear to the public, that this is not the board's article.
Sure.
This is a petitioned article, and we allow the petitioned article.
If I could, Madam Chair, I know we're not in meeting, but I still want to follow protocol.
Yeah.
So the recommendation of Select Board and FinCom is indefinite postponement. However, as we know, Moderator Ford seeks positive motions. So, Patrick, I have a positive motion prepared for you. Can we just check in later on about that amendment within your main motion?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And so that right now, the article that was vetted at the motions meeting for Article 15 was that for Mr. Otten to move that Article 15 be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant. So I believe Moderator will ask Finance Committee. They'll say they do not have a positive motion. Will then recognize Mr. Otten. And I think that's why the chair and the member are emphasizing this is his article.
Oh, yep, yep. No, fully understand.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
So, John, let me continue with a bit here. So, a feasibility study needs to be done. So it may be multiple, it may be all Harwich doing it, possibly. It may be a private organization doing it. It may be YMCA doing it. It may be multiple municipal facilities doing it. Chatham may contribute, Orleans may contribute. We don't know yet. We're going to do a feasibility study and begin answering those questions. So those are valid questions. They all need to be asked. And once we get a consensus from the town, would you like to have a pool? That's the very, it's like asking, would you like to go to dinner? Let's figure out where, how much, why, and what you're going to have to eat.
Who's paying?
Who's paying?
Exactly. Okay, I just...
Michael?
Yeah, could I just ask through you, who's going to do, you keep mentioning, we are going to do a feasibility study. Who's "we"?
We, there's, coincidentally, just by chance, when I was asking the question whether or not we'd like to have a pool, there's a nonprofit that formed called Upstream Aquatics. They have, are sourcing funding now to do a feasibility study. They've already identified a company that will do a feasibility study for lower Cape, mid Cape, and outer Cape. They're going to survey the entire area, do the full assessment, assess what is needed, how can it be done, what are the costs. So, the "we" is this nonprofit that coincidentally just happened to be formed this spring.
Thank you.
Yeah. So it's, we're not involving the town yet. It may be, I don't know. The feasibility study will answer those questions. Yeah.
Thank you, Patrick.
Does that help, John?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Thank you. Next one is Article 16. I understand the capital items that were removed from the, from the capital outlay plan. And again, I don't want to get into a great discussion there, but on the public works line item, 1.5...
John, if I could, it may help.
Yeah.
So what you're reading is the article. I can provide the current language of the main motions. So that way you have both the article language and what's expected to come before the assembly. Because the moderator will keep to the motion. So very quickly, if I could through Madam Chair.
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
So under Article 16, which is adopt the capital plan, the main motion expected to be made by the Finance Committee is that I move that Article 16 be accepted and adopted with the following changes to the fiscal year 2025 column, as set forth in Appendix C of this warrant. Under the FY 2025 column, add $1,160,000 to the Facility Maintenance 80 Parallel (Brooks Academy) project. Add $2,500,000 to the Gulf Irrigation Update project, and add $1,500,000 to the Public Works Road Maintenance/Improvements project. That will be the motion put forth by Finance Committee to town meeting.
Okay. And, thank you, Joe. As a follow-up on that, is there a funding source for each of those three?
No.
No, okay.
Well, if, can I elaborate?
Sure, no, go ahead.
The moderator and counsel have already opined that Article 16 is adopting a plan. So it's a statement of current and future expectations. Funding articles follow Article 16. We're not aware of any article, any motions, excuse me, we're not aware of any motions as of right now that would fund those additions to the plan.
Okay, okay. So they're just going to be listed, but no funding to be voted on?
Right, because I can go through all the other motions for the funding articles.
No.
None of them tied to Article 16.
No, okay. But those funding articles are in the warrant, though.
Correct, and the motions have been established.
Yeah, so those three are in, but there's no numbers, no funding source for them. So that they'll be funded at some later point, possibly. So we're just going to ask the town to approve the capital plan with these three items in it, but we have no way of paying for these three items currently.
Well, so just to follow up on that, that's FinCom's motion. That was not the board's motion.
Well, regardless of whose it is, you're asking the towns, citizens...
Right.
...to put three articles back on the capital plan.
Three projects.
Three projects.
Projects, right.
And then with the expectation that they're going to be done. But they're not going to be done because there's no funding source for them. Is that correct?
So in terms of transparency, that is why the board made a decision to not have them on the capital plan and to, as you know, bring the 1.16 back for Brooks Academy in the fall, if we're able to do that with free cash recertified, which as Select Board Member McCaskill made it clear on Monday night, you know, it's not, it's not anything new. We've done that in the past. But FinCom has made a motion to put those things back on. So I would agree with you. It's, to me, it's not as transparent in the sense that we left them off for a reason, but...
No, I fully understand that, and I fully understand that why they're put back on. But for the town citizens to fully understand that is a whole different story. I mean, they don't attend many of the select meetings, many of the FinCom meetings.
Well, that will be our job to explain that at town meeting.
So you're hoping that Brooks Academy will go back onto the fall, maybe the other two, depending on free cash certification. Okay, I understand that. But then, now to follow up on the free cash statement, that was a question I had, too. Right now, the free cash has been certified for this warrant, roughly 2.9 million, and that I guess there's a study going on or some type of recertification of the free cash.
No, and we can, we can, Kathleen, our Finance Director, is here in the audience, but we can also say, no, that's not happening. We're saying that after, it's often a common policy that when we go back, we may have more funds that have come in. But I'll let Kathleen, she's the expert, explain.
Hi, Kathleen Barrett, Finance Director. So there is some confusion a little bit with free cash. The free cash that's referenced in this town meeting is from the operations of FY 23. When June 30th, 2024 comes to pass, then everything starts anew. At the end of the year, we start all over. So at the conclusion of closing the books of '24, and looking, and submitting everything and being approved through the state, we will then have free cash certified for FY 24. We're not, it's not a, it's a, every year, it's just a certification process. In years past, there has been instances where there was like an additional free cash certification mid-year due to usually like a large unexpected sum of money that needs to be used right away. Normally, it would just fall through to the year. Excuse me. So I just don't want anyone to be under the assumption that there's multiple uses or options to get free cash. Free cash is not a requested amount. It is what the state certifies based on the results of our operations and financial reporting. We do not choose the amount. I don't want anyone to get the misunderstanding that we didn't ask for enough. We get what is a result of our, of everything that's been through. It's anything through revenue and anything that's turned back through the expenditure process. It's a very thorough process, and it's vetted by the state. So I just want to be clear that it's just a certification, and it's not like something that we choose or can get multiple times a year.
Thank you, Kathleen, and that's important clarification because, yeah, that was some, something said Monday night, I think, that caused the confusion.
Yeah, yeah.
We have done certifications, though, early for town meetings in the fall in the past, is what you and I discussed. So the intent of this board so far at least has been to seek a certification of free cash for a fall town meeting.
Sure, sure, and that, and that is something...
Yeah.
And that is our intent.
And so when we certify that free cash from 23, I guess, that'd be money, less money to go into fiscal year '25 then. So we're getting like...
I don't believe that's accurate.
No, that's not accurate.
So I think I understand your question. If we go get a certification after this town meeting for a fall town meeting, it's conceivable that whatever we spend in that period of time won't be available for the next town meeting. We'll, in essence, be doing two free cash certifications...
No.
...for the next fiscal year, which would be '26.
I'd like to try to answer this as a layperson and then have the financial person correct. Free cash certification happens in every fiscal year. The free cash certification that we are relying upon for the May 2024 annual town meeting derives from fiscal year 2023.
Right.
So once that fiscal year closes, they go through all the procedures to close the books, to certify everything, and then fill out the required documents for, to have the Department of Revenue say what is then certified for free cash, which can then be used in the next fiscal year. You're doing your free cash certification within the year that you may be using it. So the concept of two in the same year, we would not say that. We would say after the books close for fiscal year '24, we begin fiscal year '25. We hope to be back on a schedule that we are familiar with, where we may submit September, October, hopefully, for a free cash certification. If we can meet that mark, and the certification comes back in October or early November, the board and I, working with the town clerk after an arduous presidential election cycle, will work on setting a date and have funding available. But it is not accurate to say that it's a recertification. It's a distinct certification. Please correct anything I said wrong.
Nope. Joe, you explained it very well. There are instances where some towns have two town meetings a year. They'll have like a fall town meeting that's devoted specifically to like zoning and capital. And then the spring town meeting, sometimes there is no capital because the free cash has already been appropriated in the fall. So there's not usually like a second bite of the apple. There's not more money to get unless something, you know, unexpectedly came through and there was a pressing immediate need for it. You know, that's not to say that that couldn't happen. But the free cash amount that we, you know, have certified, that is, that, you know, once it's voted, that's it.
Right.
But yeah, that makes, it makes complete sense. Our goal, obviously, is to be much faster than last year. And, you know, given the consideration that a fall town meeting, it has been discussed at length, you know, we hope to get it certified well before, so for appropriate planning purposes.
Great. Thank you, Kathleen. Do you have...
Could I build on that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Only because we're talking about three items that may or may not be in the plan that we know do not have funding articles for this town meeting. I want to be clear as town administrator, who is the primary agent, to then work on behalf of the board with the Finance Director for any future town meetings we have. Certified free cash may not be the only source available. It may not be the only items that we'll deal with at a special town meeting in late and fall of 2024. That's where the discussion has been. But right now, it's more a strategy and a vision than an actual. So free cash may come to bear. The board may decide there's no purpose to have a special town meeting. That rises to the level. Other fund sources may be available, and other projects may come to form.
Okay, no, I understand. So, but you're asking for the certification of free cash for FY '24 than for the fall?
Yes.
Yeah. So that means if it gets certified, and there is some money there, that will not be, and you spend it in the fall, it won't be available for FY '25?
Annual.
Annual.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, if I heard it right, if we get a certification of free cash, and whatever's available, if all of that money is spent in November, we've spent it. But if we don't expend all of the free cash that's certified, would free cash have some availability for the 2025 annual town meeting?
It would.
It would, of course. I understand that, yeah.
Okay, so I think the answer then is no.
Right, yeah, no, you're right. If we don't expend it all, there'll be monies available.
Right. Because this year, it took until, I think, in the end of February to get certified cash for '23, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so this year...
Which was still a week earlier, I believe, than we had received it last year, so...
If you look at the full history, which we can present, of free cash certifications, I think over the last decade, it was, it is not always September, October, November.
No, but it's not in February either.
Uh, no, I would disagree with that. I've seen free cash certifications that were in February.
Okay, well, anyway, so I understand the free cash.
Okay.
So you're going to spend it, and we might not have it. Yeah, this, okay. Next Article 18, I'll move quickly. One of the capital items there is 204 Sisson, 650,000. What is that for?
Did you say 18?
18, yeah. It's just what the 204, 650,000 is for.
I wonder if you, was that renumbered? Because I have 18 as capital outlay projects funded from free cash.
Right. And in that block, there's a public...
So, John, can I correct you on something?
Mm-hmm.
In that block, there are three projects totaling 997,000.
Right.
One of which is 204 Sisson Road.
Right.
So you only want to know about Sisson Road?
Just what it's, what are we buying for 650,000, yeah?
Well, this is a forum. This is not, well, it's a board meeting, and they should be taking notes for minutes and all that. But if I can speak more freely than I do at your Monday night meetings, I think that's disingenuous. I think it's a little bit unfair. What Article 18 is getting to is funding a number of projects using free cash. The first of which is facilities maintenance for several buildings, not just the lease of which is 204 Sisson Road. So I can articulate all of the projects in there. The board can do that. But I don't understand why we're not talking about the whole number. I would have been interested in talking about $2,892,000, not just 650,000 for Sisson Road, and not just the 997,000 for Sisson Road. I think, generally speaking, the answer is it's enhancements to the building as the other projects are enhancements to the buildings. So I believe there's roof work, and I believe there's duct work to be done.
Okay, that answered the question.
Thank you, but...
I understand all the other projects, Joe, of what they are. I know what an ambulance is. I don't need an explanation for that. I know what cruiser is. I don't need an explanation for that. I asked that one question. This is a public forum on the warrant article.
No, I know.
For the public to have questions.
I don't think it's a bad thing to have a give and take. What I'm saying is...
You just said it was disingenuous.
Because that line item is not for Sisson Road. In Article 18, in the table, the line item is for facilities maintenance for a total of 997,000. I didn't say you didn't know what an ambulance was, but there's two other buildings in there with similar sized projects.
That's fine, Joe. I asked specifically...
Okay, so I'm just going to interfere in here and say, let's move on.
Yeah, okay. So it's roofs and duct work? Duct work or what?
Duct work.
Duct work.
I believe.
Okay. It's, next one is Article 22. Does anybody else want to speak? I mean, I didn't expect this. I thought we were going to...
Well, you got up to ask, you have every right to ask them. Nobody else stood up. So you're not taking up any time. Anybody else can get up and say the same thing. We'd rather, let's go through them, and let's answer your questions and keep moving.
John, can I do one thing real quick? But to be consistent, so Article 18, I just want to emphasize that we were just talking about Article 18. The motion right now that Finance Committee is making is that the article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant, and further that the sum of $2,892,000 be transferred from free cash for this purpose. So that's the motion that will be debated. Thank you.
But someone from the public could get up and ask what each of the...
Absolutely. What I'm trying to do is, as we get into the articles, I want to make sure everyone is aware of the motion that we expect to start the debate.
Okay, next one is Article 22. I understand this money is from the sale of the, whatever the street number is there, but the pet cemetery land, is that correct?
276 Queen Anne, yeah. Let's not talk about the pet cemetery.
I know, I'm not getting in there.
I don't know what the address is. I know it's always been referred to.
John, if I, if I could, so that's the article...
I might ask to be buried there.
That's the article. If I could read the motion as well. So, to Article 22, it's expenditure of funds from the sale of 276 Queen Anne Road. Others, others may catalog it as something else. And the article, excuse me, the motion to be made by Finance Committee is that Article 2 be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant, and that $1,505,001 be transferred from the Sale of Land Receipt Reserve Fund (Sale of Land Sinking Fund) (for this purpose). And for this article, it requires a two-thirds vote of the Assembly.
Okay. Thank you. I understand. The question is, this came up in last year's town meeting, the term "land sinking fund." And I see it reappear. I mean, last year was the first time I had seen it appear, but this reappeared again this year. So if it's transferred into this land sinking fund, what are the specific uses of the land sinking fund?
And I'll put the Finance Director on alert if I'm speaking correctly. So first, the funds are coming from. So we're taking it out of the sale of land sinking fund. That's, I think, right. I think that's an older term. According to the Department of Revenue's list of funds, they refer to it as a sale of land receipt reserved fund. So it's set aside. Receipts are reserved. The sinking fund concept gets to the land that was sold, if it had any debt, or sinking funds, as they used to call it old school, I believe, associated with that, you had to first deal with the debt. So specifically for 276 Queen Anne, there was never any debt. So now we look at it as that first statement of sale of land receipts reserved. And it can be used for the purpose contemplated by the article. But because I believe it's coming from that fund, that's why it requires a two-thirds vote.
So the question is, what can, what, the money that comes out of that fund, what can it be spent on? Are there restrictions on it, or can it just be spent on anything?
It can't be spent on anything. That's the concept of the receipts reserve. But I would phone a friend on what the restrictions may be.
Yeah, it's, it's not meant for operating. It's more, it's something that you can, that the town would, could borrow for, for five more years. It doesn't have a great deal of specifics, but it's meant to be for long-term use.
John, the intent...
Couple of examples.
Go ahead. I was going to say, I'm going to...
The intent of this board and the vote of this board is to use the sale of land for the purchase of land.
Okay.
So we are going to, and we've already voted, to use this for owners unknown, and to, and to piggyback on the article from two years ago, I believe it was Article 39, for 500,000 for the same purpose.
Right, correct, last year.
So we're going to, we're going to put this in that. We're going to work with real estate, open space. They've already identified three priorities in town for us to go after. And it takes an exorbitant amount of money to do this, because you have to escrow, escrow the money as you, as you go through it. So the way that the article was... So the way that the article was written, and we have verified with Town Council that we can use it for that purpose, we have that law if you wanted to read that law, but the intent of this board and the vote of this board is to use it to acquire land owners unknown and to move forward with that project.
Great, no, it's, I, I was just curious on what, if there were restrictions, and I applaud the Select Board on, on how it's going to be used. You know, as you folks, some, no, one of my concerns was the large collected unprop, unproperty and collected for taxes, and that's what this is going to be used for, to go after that number, and.
As discussed earlier today, for the public that's listening, it's over 7 million dollars.
Right, and, and yes, and that's great, thank you. Okay, next one is the Bank Street Firehouse. I'll hold a question on that, and, and the question.
Yeah, what's the number?
Is that a CPC article?
Uh, yes, 32. And again, it's just a very general, quick question, nothing to do with the, the firehouse per se, which I think is a great idea. I commend them on the, the housing initiative that they're seeking with that thing, with the monies here and then from the housing trust, or what one of the housing units gave them $500,000 for. My question is, the three units that are proposed upstairs for apartments, what type of apartments are there? I, I'm mixed up with housing trust, affordable housing, obtainable housing, 40B housing. How are these three apartments classified? Are they classified, uh, to the, I guess it's called SHI list, S-H-I.
SHI list.
SHI list. These properties classified as that so that they can, so they can count towards the town's objective of 10% low and moderate income housing? That's the question.
So I'm gonna go to you on that because I remember that we had discussion about affordable and whether or not they had to be affordable, but I think I'll go to you.
Thank you. So first, Article 32, it's a Community Preservation Act, Article 203 Bank Street Firehouse Housing. The motions were prepared through the Community Preservation, but will be made by Finance. Both Finance Committee and Select Board accept this and recommend this article. The article, the motion reads that Article 32 be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant and that $400,000 be transferred from Community Preservation Fund fiscal year 2025, estimated revenue for the purpose. So that'll be the motion, that's the source. My understanding, so I'm not, this was a private application because the entity that owns that property is not a town organization. So I, I don't want to mess up saying about their project. What I do know is that for funds that they've received previously through the Affordable Housing Trust, they are restricted to make sure that the how, the apartments are handled as affordable housing units. That is to say, for those, for those dollar amounts, and I believe the same would follow on this, but we'd have to vet that with Council and CPC, is that they would appear on the subsidized housing inventory list, the SHI list.
SHI list.
So the town would be adding three more units to the SHI list, which gets us theoretically to the 10%, all of that. But that they are, because it's funding from Community Preservation, they are restricted to affordable housing as we understand it presently, which is 40% of area median income or below.
Okay, so, so they will count towards that 10%? Cause I'm all mixed up on this classification.
No, I, yeah.
It's 80, isn't it 80? 80%. 80% of the, you said 40. It's 80%.
I thought I said 80, my head said 80.
It's 80, yeah.
It's 80, yeah.
Apologies, eight zero, good lord.
Half of 80.
Forty and forty.
They will count towards the SHI list.
We, well, if I may, we expect that they would, but the motion hasn't been debated, the action hasn't been done. If town meeting adopts the motion as presented, because it's CPC funding, because the, the units in question are already receiving funds, I believe everything trends towards they will remain affordable housing units, 80% AMI or less.
Mm-hmm, and, uh.
Hi, Elizabeth Harder, Housing Committee. Because they are partially using CPC funds, they can go up to 100% AMI. So I believe that two apartments will be under 80 and one will be up to 100. That's the last I heard. But I believe all of those go on the SHI list.
And we have Brendan from Trust.
Who's Brendan?
Hi, Brendan Loney, Affordable Housing Trust. So CPC can go up to 100%, but because we wrote the motion and we're giving the money on our side, it's gonna be 80% or less, so all three units will hit. And all three units have to be 80% or less, based on the motion that we approved and the funding that we're gonna be giving.
And they end up on the SHI list.
That's correct, yeah, it stems from us. Now CPC has given funds and they can go up to 100%, but we've already put the restriction on it. And already going through the lottery system and getting management in, in place to, you know, get that all organized, so they will hit the list. Okay?
Thank you, Brendan.
That's good, I, I just, I get confused on this housing issue of what's.
It is confusing.
You know, I mean, I'm glad that, and the one thing I've clarified, I've been clarified to me is the SHI list, and that's the 10%, that's what we want. And I, and I'm assuming that the.
And we're only at 4.6, I think it is.
4.9.
Oh, 4.9, thanks.
But, and the firemen or the owner of the property will be managing all the paperwork that's associated with that. Okay, thank you. Next one is Articles, uh, I guess it's 40, 41, and 42. These are the three other lots on Queen Anne's Road.
So this is the same, same thing as the 276 Queen Anne.
And that money will end up in the land sinking fund.
As long as they pass.
Yeah, pass and it gets sold.
Right, if they pass, it'd be the same as 276 Queen Anne.
And, and I think if, if the property's not being used for any municipal purposes or anything like that, it's a good way to get, you know, unproductive land, tax-wise unproductive, productive with, with the tax.
Right, and there's limited, there's limited land in the industrial district. Joe, you had a comment?
Well, I just wanted to, John, you said 40, 41, 42, correct?
Yeah.
Yep, so 40 is referred to as Transfer 172 Queen Anne, Road for Disposition, 41, Transfer 174 Queen Anne, Road for Disposition, 42, Transfer 246 Queen Anne, Road for Disposition. So yes, the Select Board has determined these to be surplus, not needed by the town. The next step for us, the town of Harwich, is to have approval from town meeting to dispose of them. For that purpose, each one of the Articles, it's a straightforward motion, it's that the article be accepted and adopted as printed, but because it's the disposition of land, each of these requires a two-thirds vote to pass.
Okay, uh, thank you. The next one is Article 45, and it's, I think it's, it's just, I, I was just reading it and I just jotted down. Under 45, Chapter 4, you read that the town administrator is provided in Chapter 4, gets to appoint, remove, town council, town accountant, police chief, fire chief, assessors, overlapping three terms, registers, elected, other elected officials or more constables, and human resources position. You left out the harbor master position, is not in that list of other departments because on the next page you strike out that.
The harbor master.
The harbor, just that the harbor master, I think, should be included with that list of people, that's all.
Well, there is a reason, Joe, go ahead, I'll let you.
Thank you. So Article 45 is amendments to the Harwich Charter. The motion is straightforward, that Article 45 be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant. Because it's charter amendments, it requires a two-thirds vote of the Assembly. But if I may, John, before you get into specific sections within, Article 45 identifies 11 distinct amendments to the Harwich Charter. So number one is Chapter 2 for town meeting, a procedural matter. The second item is Chapter 3 regarding the Select Board. The third matter is Chapter 3 regarding the Select Board's specific duties. Chapter 4 is, excuse me, Item 4 is Chapter 3 Select Board Powers of Appointment. The fifth item is Chapter 3 Select Board Prohibitions under 7. Item 6 is Chapter 4 Town Administrator About Responsibilities for Appointment. Item 7 is Chapter 4 Administrator, Section 4 Responsibilities. Item 8, Chapter 7, Town, Appointed Town Agencies, Section 4 specifically to Board of Health. Item 9, Chapter 8 Election and Recall Regarding Town Elections. And Item 10, Chapter 9, Financial Provisions and Procedures, specifically the submission of budget and budget message. Item 11, Chapter 9, Financial Provisions, Action on the Proposed Budget. So that's the sum of the entire article. The motion recommends the adoption of the entire article, requires a two-thirds vote. So then, John, could I ask, which of the items were you talking about?
Uh, it's Chapter, it was just, I wanted to include the harbor master, it seems to be, his, his role was struck on 4, 4-4-3, the town administrator shall appoint the harbor master and any assistant.
So, John, if I could, just so that everyone can play along, that's the seventh of the 11 items.
Yeah.
So Item 7 says, Chapter 4 Town Administrator, Section 4 Responsibilities. It makes reference specifically to Clause Number 3, which is 4-4-3. My understanding is, it reads presently as, the town administrator shall appoint the harbor master and any assistant harbor masters. And the action identified there is a strike through. I would defer to the Select Board liaison, but I believe on that item, bylaw charter review, Select Board liaison on Select Board felt that it was unnecessary to duplicate that because it is implied when it talks about the administrator's powers of appointment.
That's exactly right, Joe, that, that was a duplicate.
Right.
And charter bylaw, as well as the Select Board, felt that there was no need to have it in two places and that could confuse.
It is, if I may, it's not, it is not intended to eliminate the positions of harbor master and assistant harbor master.
No, but I, I didn't see it in that Chapter 3 thing. You list about four different, five different positions, but no harbor master. It's in, if I believe, Joe, if I'm right, it's in another section.
Correct, I think.
Right, it's duplicative.
It's duplicative, it's in another section. Where's that section?
It's not in the warrant.
Oh, not in here, yeah.
We're not changing that.
Oh, okay.
It's only what we're changing is in the warrant, and I'm gonna just go to Patrick cause he's doing it.
No, that's fine.
Did you have a question on this, Patrick?
Actually, I had a question on John's prior two questions about the disposition of property requiring two-thirds vote. If you don't get the two-thirds vote, what happens?
So the, the property remains the property of the town, it's not used and we can't dispose of it yet.
Okay, and the only.
Short term.
Yeah, so each time you want to dispose of it, then it comes before town meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
Generally speaking, if I could, anytime you're dealing with matters of land, even if the land is under the purview of the Select Board, statute, state law requires that town meeting be the ones to okay it.
Yeah, okay, good, thank you.
Okay, I understand, I just, I, I saw it's.
So you thought of what, we were taking it out, but it's just that it's.
That you forgot to put it back in, so.
Right, trying to clean it up, that's.
Yeah, no, I'm fine, I'm glad John has a job. The next one is, it's, I don't know a personal opinion, but this is just a thought. It's in, in section of the charter review, Section 3-7-1, the last line that's gonna be asked to be adopted is.
John, if I, just, again, just, perhaps for, sorry.
Dash seven, dash.
That's Item 5 under the article, Chapter 3 Select Board, Section 7, Prohibitions, specifically the Clause 371. And there is first a change, changing from Board of Selectment to Select Board, and then at the end of that paragraph, that clause is adding the following sentence. The Human Resources Position will report to both the town administrator and the Select Board.
Correct.
Is that the item you wanted to speak to?
That, and it's just a personal observation, personal comment, is, you know, how can a person have two bosses in a role like this?
So again, this is relating to the HR position that we've been talking about, hiring somebody.
Which I think is a good position.
Right, and then this is a proposed charter change that would allow that person in that role to report to both. We don't know if it will end up being successful at town meeting, but that's the intent of that.
But if it passes at town meeting, which I'm sure probably will, I'm no forecaster, but it passes, now this person has two bosses, and who does this person go to?
Well, the reason for that would be that currently the board does not get involved in any kind of personnel issues, we're not allowed to per the charter. This would expand the ability for the board to be able to have different conversations that we currently don't, we cannot have.
So the Human Resources would just petition the board, I guess, just to speak to you directly about a matter that.
Yeah, they would be able to speak to us directly, similar to the Finance Director and Joe being the town administrator and the police and fire chiefs.
Okay, great, thank you. I just, I was saying where I worked, a person who has two bosses doesn't have any boss, and so, anyway. Last question is, I'm, well, I had a question on the medium household income, but I, I know what that is now. The last question is Article 50, the electronic voting machines?
So, yeah.
No number?
There is no number because the moderator gave us this article, this, and ultimately it's going to be to gauge, similar to the pool article, if, if the town wants to move forward with electronic voting. If it's successful at town meeting, then we will put a number to it through either leasing or purchasing, which could go anywhere from, I think we said, anywhere from 25 to 50, depending on what way we would look to do that. Joe?
And again, just for consistency, presently in the motions book, Article 50, fund electronic voting at town meetings, there is a positive main motion, it says, I move that Article 50 be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant. However, as we've put in the motions book, I disclaimer that that was the motion that was in play at a certain time. I defer to what the chair said, the moderator, I believe, he's gonna take it as it comes up.
Right.
So there might be a different motion than what's presently put forward.
Okay, it, it just comes back to the same question, how can people vote on something when they don't know what it costs?
Well, ultimately, it's not that nobody can give an idea of what that cost will be.
Oh, yeah, but someone will, okay.
But, you know, ultimately, you need to ask the question. Some people don't want electronic voting.
But usually the question's asked with, and the answer is, how much does it cost? You know, that sways some people's.
So I would also just say that we got our article at the 11th. Michael?
Well, it has to come back to the town with a number to be voted, so it could be voted down regardless of what this town meeting says. So this is to gauge whether or not the majority of town meeting even wants clickers, and if they don't, cause I'm with you, John, I think no numbers.
Yeah.
The pool, the pool could be 4999 Ocean State jobs, 25 million dollars, so seems like a stretch to even get there.
No.
Voting tabulators, I do believe.
Who's taking notes?
There has been, there has been, these are voting tabulators. This is to gauge how much interest.
No, and I fully support the tabulators. I think, if you remember, some of you were on the board, I wrote a letter to the board with some thoughts on town meeting of what I think should be a nice thing to have, and this is one of them. I really think it's happening, but I, I'd like to see numbers attached to things personally, you know? And I understand.
So I, yeah, I mean, in, in an ideal position, we would have a number, but like I said, the article came to us late and ultimately, we could end up having money at, as we've discussed, but we don't have it now, and so in transparency, we're not gonna put a number there.
Yeah.
If we don't have it.
I understand that, okay. Last question is Article 52, the sewer assistance grant program, which I think is a great, great, great thing to do. The only question, unless Joe wants to read the motion on it, I mean.
Thank you, yep. Article 52 is referred to as fund a sewer assistance grant program. There's a main motion that states that Article 52 be accepted and adopted and that $100,000 be transferred from the wastewater enterprise fund reserved for special purpose fund for this purpose.
Correct. My only question is, is who's eligible for this? Will non-resident, if you own property here, but you're not a resident, would you be eligible for this assistance program or has it been?
So there'll be a, there'll be a process in terms of, similar to the way tax, you know, the Board of Assessors would give tax abate, credits, et cetera, it'll be the same vetting process. Those means will have to be met.
So, so a non-resident would be able to apply for it?
Well, and not.
If they own property here, obviously, yeah.
If, yeah, but, so, yes, same way, but technically you're supposed to be. If, yeah, but, so, yes, the same way, but technically, you're supposed to be a full-time resident, I believe, in terms of looking for a credit. Go ahead, Michael.
John, this is financial-based, so if you have a second home on Cape Cod, you probably don't qualify.
Oh, is it?
Well, that's what I'm trying to say politely.
So, and, and the, and the, it really is for the people that would qualify maybe for the Barnstable County Loan Program, but then couldn't make the payments.
Okay.
So it's like a senior tax credit, where there's gonna be, the Board of Assessors have agreed to do the financial piece of this, so that the Board of Health don't have to. So, same criteria, there's a lot of paperwork involved, and you, and it will be a financial hardship.
Sure.
So, again, just to clarify, as a non-resident, you would have a second home?
Yeah.
That's what I was trying to nicely say, which is, you probably wouldn't need it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, this is a great discussion that further demonstrates the difference between this forum, a true Select Board meeting, and town meeting, because the motion that I read would be read, and then an explanation would be offered. So, in that warrant, but what's easier to read in the book is the following explanation, if I could. "This appropriation will fund a grant program to provide financial assistance to income-eligible homeowners to connect their properties to the town sewer system and to decommission their existing septic systems. The Select Board will develop the details of the program, including income eligibility for participation." So I only emphasize that because that's how we will do it in real time on May sixth, or seventh, or eighth?
Let's just say sixth.
All right. Meaning, what town meeting's being asked is, can we use the dollars that have been set aside by the Water Wastewater Commissioners to then let the Select Board build a program, and we'll start out with those funds available?
Fully understand, and I, I think that's a good place for it to live, is under the Assessors' umbrella there. And I think we lead the state in exemptions, I think.
We do.
In the, I mean, and not being.
No, no.
Funny at all, I think, I think it's a good program.
Right. No, Board of Assessors has done a wonderful job.
Tremendous job, yeah.
In trying to help, you know, people with their, staying in their homes and.
Yeah, no, I know some people in East Harwich that just can't afford it, just cannot afford it. So this is great, so thank you for the time.
It was, and it was the Sewer Assistance Program, the SAP, but it's turned into the SAG.
They threw a G in there, so it's not a SAP. John, do you wanna ask about herring fisheries?
Uh, no, yeah, well, I would have liked to seen us get the herring this year, but maybe next year, so.
I apologize for the joke.
But, thank you, thank you for the time.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, Sean.
And I, I think it's a good education for me, anyway, and hopefully someone watching this will ask.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for attending.
True giver.
Hi, Elizabeth Harder, citizen of Harwich, not representing anything. I'm glad to hear that the grant money will be for, you know, let me rephrase this. The county has a program called Aqua Fund, which will give out loans to people from zero percent to four percent. One of the things we've been fighting about is for the people who can't afford to take that loan out. So hearing that this is what the Harwich money is for is beautiful. So, thank you for that. Then, the other, the only question I have is Article nineteen, why are we, why does it cost one point seven million dollars to paint a water tank?
Give that to Joe.
Well, first, before I do that, the actual motion for Article nineteen, Capital L.A. projects funded from water retained earnings and borrowing, the positive motion, main motion, is that the Article nineteen be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant, and that two million four hundred, two thousand dollars be appropriated for the purposes of this article, and to meet this appropriation, one million six hundred fifty, two thousand dollars be transferred from the water, Water Enterprise retained earnings, excuse me, Water Enterprise Fund retained earnings, and that the town authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board to borrow seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, and do issue bonds and notes of the town, therefore pursuant to general laws, Chapter forty-four, Section seven or eight, or any other enabling authority for the purpose of painting Pleasant Lake Avenue water tank, including all costs incidental and related thereto. And so I understand the question is, why does it cost that much? My answer would be, cause that's what the Water, Wastewater Superintendent got for preliminary quotes on the job.
And is it really necessary?
I believe he would argue.
Is it really ugly and, and it's bad?
I don't think it's, I don't think it's an ugly thing, I think it's a maintenance thing. Specifically, well, sorry, hang on, that's also part of the overall Article nineteen, so Article nineteen, the full amount of two million four hundred, two thousand, has four items, the fourth of which is one million seven hundred fifty thousand. So, yes, when they went out to do their preliminary estimates, it costs one point seven five million to paint the Pleasant Lake water tower. I believe the Water Commissioners, Water Wastewater Commissioners, Select Board, and the Superintendent will tell you, it is necessary maintenance of the tank, and painting is a required element of maintenance.
Yikes. Okay, I just wanted to know, I wasn't. And then, two quick things. One, I just wanna put in the Select Board's head that all the land you're gonna get, Article twenty-two, should go to housing. And then, just in Article three, under salaries, it still says selectmen instead of Select Board Members.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
May I go next?
Sure.
Thank you. I'm here to ask you some questions about Article thirty-seven, which.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, can you state your name?
Article thirty-seven, it's, it's regarding.
No, sorry, can you just state your name, so?
Oh, sorry, Matt Sutphen, Harvard Center.
Thank you.
Article thirty-seven is a, an appropriation of what I understand to be an additional twenty-five thousand dollars for the, the Brooks Academy, Brooks Library trustees to spend in the front of the building, redoing the paving and cutting down the existing trees. And I, my, what I need clarification on is, I think there's ninety thousand dollars already earmarked for that work, but that, they need an additional twenty-five. So, a hundred fifteen thousand dollars to do some leveling out where the tree roots are raising the brick, but I would invite everybody here tonight to walk over there on their way home and tell me that the problem is a hundred fifty, fifteen thousand dollar problem. It's just not. I'm concerned that people are not distinguishing adequately when they vote on things, the difference between needs and wants. It seems like everything's become a need, and when you get different department heads and organizations that say, "This is what I need, this is what I need," I think it just can't be accepted on face value that they need it. They may want it, a lot of things I want, too, but, but I'm more value-oriented when it comes to expenditures. I, I like to keep the money in the pocket for the schools and for the elderly and all those things, but when, when you get to something that's clearly discretionary, what are you doing it for?
Mr. Sutphen, could I just ask for a moment, can I read the motion specific to that?
Clearly, I'm looking forward to getting it clear on.
And then, because I, I think it will help give context to your remarks?
Sure.
And it was Article thirty-seven, correct?
Before you read that, I just wanna say that we're also in receipt of, I believe you sent us an email, or you mentioned in the Chronicle.
Well, I did put it out there because like, it's, it's not really the tree, it is the trees and this streetscape, but it's really more the idea that one would want to spend that much money on this project, or other, other projects.
I just wanted to acknowledge that you had shared information that related to both.
Yes, thank you, thank you, I appreciate that.
Article thirty-seven, repurpose Article thirty-one of the two thousand thirteen Annual Town Meeting, a straight main motion that says that Article thirty-seven be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant. The explanation that we have there is, this is by request of the Select Board and the Board of Library Trustees, so two elected bodies. The Board of Library Trustees voted to recommend this action to help defray the cost anticipated in the completion of the sidewalk repair and tree removal. The Department of Public Works has indicated funds previously appropriated under Article twelve at the two thousand nineteen Annual Town Meeting, that was for ninety thousand dollars, are insufficient to complete this project. It is expected that the amount in this article combined with the original funds will be sufficient. The original purpose of Article thirty-one is no longer relevant, so that the, the purpose of Article thirty-one of the two thousand thirteen Annual Town Meeting is no longer relevant, as the Facilities Maintenance Department has evaluated the condition of the tile flooring in the bathrooms in Brooks Free Library, and has determined that they are structurally sound. And then, Madam Chair, members and everyone else, I will tell you that we have a comprehensive and, in my opinion, cogent argument by the Board of Library Trustees that was presented to the Select Board as far back as October of two thousand twenty-three. I would rather yield to the Chair of the Board of Library Trustees, but if I may, this enjoys the support of the Select Board, the Board of Trustees, and the Finance.
Yes, I got that, and it bothered me to read that it got all that full support. Now, I suppose, so part of the ninety thousand is going for other things. We don't have a number then for what it's gonna take to do the work in, on the road, on the street?
So, I'm gonna ask Linda Sebula, who's standing behind you, to come up too.
Sure, thanks.
Linda Sebula, for, I'm Chair of the Brooks Library Free Trust, Free Library for the Trustees, and yes, we did put this article in, we did have, we did have monies under an old article. The floors are in great shape. Sean Libby has assessed everything with us and with Jenny Hewitt, our librarian, and there is nothing that needs to be done. The carpets that were put down, the flooring that was put down, is in great shape, and there's, so therefore, we do not have a need for this twenty-five thousand dollars. We've been holding it in case we needed it, but we do not. And, and when we heard that taking up the bricks, taking down the trees, cause the tree roots are spreading, and they're buckling the bricks, the idea is to replace the bricks, and there are some new techniques where you put down a concrete bed, and then you put the bricks on top of that, which really reduces the buckling of bricks that does happen. You then wanna plant trees that the roots go down and not out, so that's what all this is. We were informed that the ninety thousand dollars from Article twelve of a prior year was probably not gonna be adequate to then replace the trees. We want trees back. So that is why we said, we would like to propose to the Select Board, this article that said, this twenty-five thousand dollars, we would like to go to planting some trees whose roots go straight down, so that we're not redoing sidewalks in another twenty-five years again. So, while we do understand that schools need money and everybody else needs money, this is our article to use, and we would like it to go to the trees, we think that it would be a benefit, and it would be a benefit to the streetscape. So, that is why we did this, and I, our Board did vote this, so I am authorized to speak to this.
Thank you, Linda. Did you have a follow-up question?
Thank you, ma'am, follow-up rejoinder. I, I ask everybody to go out on their way home and just walk over there and look at the ripples in the brick, and I just think you'd all scratch your head. There's, anybody who wants to go home tonight and Google the New York Times for last Sunday, there's an article about cutting down trees and replanting new trees, and how people love to start a new project, but they don't have an adequate reverence, reverence for what already exists. I, I just can't, like I said, I, it's a hundred and fifteen thousand, it's coming from this town, from, from you, me, and everybody else, for a project that just doesn't have enough import when you consider the number of people that need housing, that need this, that need that. It's, if you could wanna just chalk it up to, oh, it's only a hundred and fifteen, and I'm afraid that's what's going on here. Oh, it's only a hundred and fifteen thousand. Those aggregate up, all those hundred and fifteen thousands. This was not a good use of money, and it, and it would make me concerned about the Board's willingness to vote like projects in the future. I, I see it as an erosion of, of funds.
Well, it's going to town meeting, and that's where it will be decided.
So, the question then is, if the town decides they don't wanna vote the twenty-five, what happens to the trees, to the, to the streetscape?
Well, if it doesn't have enough money to fund the project, then it wouldn't go forward.
Okay. I'll just add one little thing. I have an excellent authority, I have a son-in-law who's a fairly regarded landscape designer, who tells me, "There is no such thing as a taproot tree that doesn't have surface roots." I think that is just dreaming, to think that a taproot can go down and the tree doesn't need any water to grow.
So I think you bring, you know, valid points that you should bring to town meeting floor to make your opinion.
Oh, well, thank you, I, I appreciate that, and I hope you'll consider it as well when you're voting money in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Michael?
I just, I noticed there's members of the Finance Committee in the room, and I believe they had a meeting last night. I'd, I'd ask if they could give us an update on any changes that were voted.
Thank you. Bob? Well, you know, the, the meeting's not accessible currently, so we'd like to, to hear what you might have done, changes or any revisions.
Bob McCready, Harwich Port, member of the Finance Committee, and I wish I had the minutes already so that I could actually respond. There were very little changes of, there were, I think, in fact, I think the only ones that were voted on were essentially corrections with regard to the articles that needed, that had changed since we had earlier voted, and I think those all were ones that needed to be IP'd currently. I'm not a hundred percent sure that that represents everything, but there were only a few votes taken, and again, I think they all related to updates on, as a result of an updated warrant and set of motions.
Okay. You've got a lifeline that just.
Yeah.
Mark, the question was, that you had a Finance Committee last night, meeting last night, it's inaccessible online right now, could you give us an update of what Finance Committee changed last night? As we're having a warrant discussion, I think it's relevant information if you changed any information. Bob seems to think that it was a few minor changes to things that needed to be changed to IP. Do you have any recollection of changes that were made through the Finance Committee last night?
I would say there were minor changes.
Can you do the microphone, please?
Mark Keller, West Harwich Finance Committee. There were relatively minor changes. I'm not that familiar with the motions and all that terminology, but in terms of textual things, minor changes, so, does that help?
I guess, no, but.
So, yeah.
I guess I'll wait to see the tape online.
Yeah, okay.
Minor changes in, in formats of articles, minor changes in motions.
Minor changes in motions.
Motions, okay, so are we changing any of the articles?
I don't believe there were any changes to articles.
Okay.
So, no change to, what is it, Article four? I think it was Article four.
No, no change to Article four.
Okay. And, if I may, I would ask the Town Administrator to read the motion for Article four for me.
Certainly, if I may also add, just, cause I sort of view this forum as also potentially an education session for anyone for town meeting. The phrase IP means indefinite postponement. It's a standard parliamentary act that causes an action to be defeated. So when they were talking about in IP, it's a motion to kill, and the moderator would seek positive motions. I hope that made sense, and I hope it helped. The motion for Article four.
It makes sense, Joe, but it would be great if we could get those minutes sooner rather than later, given the timeframe of town meeting, so that we can plan if things changed where there's not a positive motion where there was at the motions meeting.
Well, yeah, and there was also follow-up required by, today by Danielle, just to make other changes, so we just, we wanna clean everything up so that we're all done with this, so as quickly as you can get that info would be helpful to staff as well. Go ahead, Joe.
Article four, Town Operating Budget. I move that Article four be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant, and that the sum of forty-five million, seven hundred thirty-two thousand, three hundred nine dollars be appropriated for the purposes listed in Appendix B, under the column titled, "Two Thousand Twenty-Five Select Board Recommend," and further, that the sum of forty-three million, forty-one thousand, six hundred seventy dollars be raised and appropriated, and the following amounts be transferred as follows. Two thousand dollars from the Septic Loan Betterment Fund, fifteen thousand dollars from the Skin Equipment.
from the Skin and Quit Road Betterment Fund, fifty thousand dollars from the Ginger Plum Lane Betterment Fund, seventy-eight thousand dollars from the Allen Harbor Betterment Fund, two-hundred-twenty-six thousand, nine-hundred-sixty-four dollars from the Cable Public Education Government Fund, ninety-five thousand, two-hundred dollars from the Golf Improvement Receipts Reserve Fund, two-hundred thousand dollars from the Waterways Management Receipts Reserved Fund, two-hundred thousand dollars from the Harbor Improvement and Maintenance Receipts Reserve Fund, four-hundred thousand dollars from Overlay Surplus, eight-hundred-sixty-one thousand, three-hundred-twenty-seven dollars from the Water Enterprise Fund, sixty-two thousand, one-hundred-forty-eight dollars from the Wastewater Enterprise Fund, and fifty thousand dollars from the Wastewater Special...
Five hundred.
What did I say?
Fifty.
If you want to kick me out, I won't object. I apologize. And fifty... Five hundred thousand dollars from the Wastewater Special Purpose Stabilization Fund for the purpose of funding the fiscal year 2025 operating budget, for a total budget appropriation of forty-five million, seven-hundred-thirty-two thousand, three-hundred-nine dollars, with the following changes to Appendix B, the 2025 Select Board Recommended Budget. Line item one-thirty-one, Finance Committee Reserve Fund increase by seventy-five thousand dollars to a total of one-hundred-twenty-five thousand dollars. And line item two-twenty, Fire, salaries and wages decrease by a total, excuse me, decrease by seventy-five thousand dollars to a total of five million, four-hundred-ten thousand, one-hundred-fifteen dollars. Sorry for the errors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess where I was going was that I'm trying to understand how the Finance Committee voted to take seventy-five thousand dollars out of a department's budget to increase their budget, the Finance Committee's budget, that they traditionally do not use, and what the intent of said action is. Never heard of this before, and the moderator in thirty years has not heard of this either. What was the intent?
The intent, and I do believe that, at least from reference from old timers, I guess I'll say, that there were, while this treatment in this article may be different, there were years in the past when the Finance Committee reserve was relatively larger than the current fifty thousand dollars. I think the intent was to take the opportunity to provide a context for, trying to add an additional level of oversight, I guess, would be a reference to the use of overtime dollars by the Fire Department, and simply move it to move a portion of the overtime budget to reserve account, so that there would be a conversation with the Fire Department when it was time to utilize those funds.
So I guess to...
Yeah, go ahead, because I have a follow-up.
To follow up on this, and I really hope that the Finance Committee meets and reconsiders this. First, if it was, you used the word "old timers," I promise never to use it anymore, but I'll just, I'll say, if it's on that site, most likely, it's not true.
I don't mean the site. I'm sorry.
I'll leave it at that. But the seventy-five thousand, and maybe the Finance Director could do this, when did it become the Finance Committee's job responsibility? And wherein the charter does it say that you'll manage any department's budget? And I guess the Finance Director would have to answer whether or not that seventy-five thousand could be given to up your reserve fund, but any department head or anybody in the town would have the right to come back for that. So let's just say there's a catastrophic event at the harbor, and the harbor master comes in and takes a hundred and twenty-five thousand, and that's gone. Then what does the Fire Department do when they need that overtime? And I guess I'm really just confused as to how the Finance Committee thinks that it can strip a budget from the Fire Department to manage when that's not their duty or responsibility. And Bob, maybe you can answer that. It's not directed at you. It's directed at the Finance Committee, and it's only my hope that you reconsider. Michael Ford's been the moderator in town for over thirty years. He's never seen this. And I would question the legality of taking that money and setting aside in your reserve fund for use by the Fire Department only. And I guess I would defer to Town Administrator, the Finance Director, to go. And again, that was not pointed at you. It's pointed at the Finance Committee. And I just, again, do not understand where the Finance Committee thinks that they're going to get involved in the management of the town. And if the Board members think so, they should run for the Board of Selectmen instead of having, you know, uncontested races. There's usually plenty of room for races. And maybe some of the people making these decisions should get on the Board of Selectmen and not be on the Finance Committee. But it's up to Town Meeting to decide.
And prior to, I just want to say also that there's fifty thousand still in the reserve, which means that budgets have been going well. And in your meeting, it was referred to as saving that money for the Fire Department, when it shouldn't really be taken out of their budget to begin with. If we saw a need, we would have made that decision. But ultimately, and again, not just aimed at you, but at the committee, those monies can't be specifically allotted to Fire because they're a reserve fund. So there was fifty in there, there's still fifty. If there was a need or an ask for one-twenty-five, nobody made it to this Board. So taking it from Fire to increase the reserve isn't right. And again, back to the point, I specifically, as you know, asked in our motions meeting, I asked for a history of if that had ever happened in the past. And according to Michael Ford, who's been the moderator for nearly, I think, forty years, he couldn't recall a time. So, and now I'll go to you.
Thank you. First, what I want to offer is relative to the process that the town has in place, and I believe has had in place for a number of years, on intra-fiscal year, so current fiscal year transfers. And we typically do them, although there's no requirement to do them at the end of the fiscal year. We typically, the Finance Director will reach out to the department heads, including administrations, saying, please start formulating your end-of-year transfers from reserves, if any. We typically take that up, we being administration, Finance Committee, then administration, Select Board. We take that process up usually May and June. And so this act, as imagined by the motion, would populate one of the lines, one of the reserve accounts, Finance Committee, from the fifty that exist to one-hundred-twenty-five thousand. But that's not the sole purview, as I understand it, of the Finance Committee. The transfers process that the town has, that the Finance Director is probably going to be able to speak better than I, is regulated by state financial laws and regulations. And it usually starts with a request from a department to the Finance Director, that then goes to the Finance Committee for consideration. They vote them, they sign it. It then goes to me as Town Administrator to approve them, and then it finally goes to the Select Board. So even if this motion, as presented, were adopted, it does not guarantee the outcome that the FinCom, in my opinion, is imagining. If I may, however, to Select Board Member McCaskill's question, I'd like to then defer to my colleague on her comments regarding our transfers process.
Sure. And just to clarify, so just for example, last year, there was transfers that were required due to sometimes an open position is filled by an outside agency, so a salary line is then transferred to an expense line. So we have transfers between departments. A reserve fund transfer is a different type of transfer. It is such that it's, the original intent is for unforeseen and unexpected events. As we all know, things like that do happen well beyond the scope of a department's budget, so that's what it's there for. It is not a savings account. It is not to be earmarked. You are going against the spirit of the law when you say that we are going to set money aside in a reserve fund for a future use, specifically for a department, when its intent is to be for unforeseen and unexpected. So that's what I would caution. And just to clarify, of course, to the Board and the Town Administrator's point, is the budgets are reviewed, you know, by my department, and, you know, and the information is given to the Board. We watch it all year. These are not, you know, ballooning costs. There are always circumstances where there'll be a large incident that would require a great deal of overtime, which would be known to everybody. So for every department, the budgets are always managed. So this would not be something that would sneak up, and, you know, we'd have to try to meet with people to discuss, you know, how do we handle it? This would, you know, Chief LeBlanc does a terrific job of, you know, calculating all of the expenses that he's for this budget. So I have great faith in him and how he does this process. And I think it's not within the correct use of the reserve fund.
Thank you, Kathleen. And I just have a follow-up, because I took notes from your meeting, and one member asked, I'm not going to name names, one member asked specifically, how do we arrive at seventy-five thousand? And the statement was made, well, thought maybe fifty was too low and a hundred was too high. That's, and then it was specifically said that Finance Committee used to have a balance of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand in their reserve. So I think that even those comments, which anybody, you know, can watch, show that this was just a subjective decision to increase Finance Committee's budget without any ask to the Board, without any discussion, and it appears to be penalizing the Fire Department, and there's no reason to do that, as you've just heard. The Board didn't see a need for that. Finance Director, the Town Administrator reviews those budgets, and the confidence is there. So I agree. I thought you were going to probably tell us that you had a reconsideration of that, based especially on what the moderator also said at our motions meeting. But it doesn't sound like that occurred, and I would agree with Select Board Member McCaskill, that I would hope that you would revisit that. I think it's important that you do. Joe?
Well, it's germane to the overall conversation, but I think to build off of what you just ended with, and if this may be the last discussion we have tonight, I definitely want to end on this note. I have said publicly, and will emphasize over the coming weeks, and certainly in twelve days, I think, probably less, I'm not good at math, on Wednesday night, sorry. We have positive motions. That's a, it's a nickname for parliamentary procedure, main motion. But to have a positive motion is a good thing. And this town, Town of Harwich, has a balanced budget and agreement between the executive body, the Select Board, and the Legislative Assembly's financial arm, the Finance Committee. So our two branches of government are in agreement, and as representatives technically of the third branch of administration, if I may say it, we couldn't be happier. This is a great message to have this level of agreement. We're going to have disagreements at Town Meeting. That's not a bad thing. But for Article four, the operating budget, the heart of our overall budget, our comprehensive budget, to have agreement between the Finance Committee and the Select Board going into Town Meeting is every Town Administrator's, probably every Finance Director's, dream. And the same thing is true for Article sixteen, to adopt a capital plan. For me, as a former moderator, and as someone who is a geek and very much enamored of parliamentary procedure, this strikes as an unnecessary attack. You know, there's certain phrases that I won't use that can be used in parliamentary parlance. The intent of all parties is to adopt the operating budget. That's a great position. I'm distressed by the fact that we're going to probably spend time fighting over, and let me just emphasize, not because I derive my position, but because I have been a key architect of this process from day one, I wholeheartedly agree with the Select Board statements about this motion. Because we agree, on the bottom line, we agree on all the funding sources, and it's not all taxes. We agree. So now we're going to have a lower level of discussion on a line item. And I'm not going to comment on motives. But that's not why we have a triple-A bond rating for the Town of Harwich, and we do. We're regarded as a well-managed, well-financed, well-run town, and that's all three branches. That's Town Meeting, that's Select Board, that's Administration, that's Voters, that's everybody. So the motion, the only difference in this motion are the last twenty words, and it is a parliamentary dance to move numbers around without changing the bottom line and putting arguably one of our finest departments at risk. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the kind of thing I'll say at a forum.
Thank you.
I may not say it at a Board meeting.
So, thank you. Any other questions?
One quick thing.
Say your name again. Yeah, thank you.
One quick thing. The Town Meeting, the people, is the legislative branch.
Gary Conroy, Bay Road. So in the eight-point-one percent increase on the total budget, how many new positions would be in there?
It's one.
One.
One position.
So we're hiring one more person, and we have to raise the budget more than a hundred percent above inflation.
So the eight-point-one percent reflects an increase in health insurance costs. It does represent the position. And there's another element. What is the other number? I'm forgetting, insurance?
Enhancement of services, insurance.
Enhancement of services, which, right.
And additional services.
And additional services, yeah. So, and that was the Select Board's decision to move forward with the ones that were in control, which is the HR position. The health insurance is not in our control.
I'm just saying, as a resident, having a budget that's more than a hundred percent above CPI is a big number. From my chair. I know you're sitting in a different chair, so I'm not criticizing you. Just saying that resonates through the community. The capital for the Monomoy Middle School, has there been any further negotiations with Chatham on the allocation of expense and capital since the last adjustment we made?
Meaning that the overall budget, the overall amount we're paying to fund Monomoy?
Right.
I just want to make sure I understand your question correctly. So we have made it quite clear that we need to have the conversation. We have had some conversations, and I believe Chatham, which I actually just happen to be looking at their goals and objectives, also put in their goals and objectives about their statement for support of a strong school system. So I hope that that's also a good signal to us, that they're open to that discussion, because we would agree that this is not sustainable over the long term, and we need to be able to figure out how we move forward. That's not going to be an easy discussion.
So there's nothing going on currently?
Nothing right this second, no.
So would we consider, the Board, pausing on voting for this, so that they would understand that we want to negotiate before we approve any more money for the school system, when it's perceived as maintenance?
Are you talking about the two and a half?
Yeah, the two and a half million dollars.
Oh, I thought you were talking about the whole budget.
No, not the whole budget.
Well, no, that's a ballot question, and it's also a Town Meeting, so it has to pass in order to go forward with that project. If it doesn't pass on our end, then the work has to be held off on. And ultimately, holding off on that brings to mind another building that was... And ultimately, holding off on that brings to mind another building that was held off on for many years, where 204 Sisson, where things weren't done. And granted, that used to be a school, and I'm, I'm kind of mixing things because the school was turned over to us and maintenance wasn't done. Now we're criticized for spending money on an asset that we have in town. They are trying to do maintenance to that building in the middle school to make sure that the building will continue to last. We have had conversations about what the lifespan of that building is, and they assure us that the building is in good shape, but these are trim and other items that have to be done.
I'm not suggesting we shouldn't do maintenance. I'm just suggesting this one time, we pause if we're going to have a fall meeting and then we can bring it back up in a fall meeting. So we send a message to Chatham saying, gee, you know, we're not comfortable with the percentage that we've got to pay for this 2.5 million project. And it would spur some conversation with Chatham and maybe get a little more out there in the community that we're serious about trying to negotiate a better deal.
Well, ultimately, it has to be at town meeting and a ballot question. So if we were to do that, we would have to table it to the following election.
Right, that's what I was saying.
Well, I don't think that, you know, we can have that discussion at town meeting, that's the purpose of it. It's going to be on town meeting floor and it's going to be on the ballot. So it is out there for debate.
Last question I have. On the sidewalk discussion about the library, it seemed like that was all old money that they are going to use. And do we have a sense of money that we've approved in former town meetings that we have not spent? And is it a big, big liability going forward if all this money starts to bubble up over the future years?
So monies that aren't spent on other article, in the past articles is your question, right?
Right.
And, and so I will go to Kathleen in terms of any number of articles that are still open from previous years, but we, as a Board, have talked about looking at those and figuring out if those monies are no longer needed and they no longer serve a purpose, we need to bring them back in.
Can I just jump in on that one particularly? So to the concept of repurposing existing appropriations, there is no dollar amount necessarily that catches the eye of the bond raters and all of that. However, it is recognized as a good practice that if you have funds available, that you ask town meeting to repurpose. If town meeting says no, eventually those funds go to the general fund?
They can, they'll go to free cash.
Or free cash.
Yeah.
But the presence of them generally is not a wart on a town for financial management purposes. But as the Chair has said, we have actively, certainly over the last five years, and very much under this Board, been tracking all those dollar amounts. So we can have more information ready for town meeting on outstanding article balances, but I will
It seems this stuff shouldn't float there forever.
No, I would agree with that, and I would also tell you that I think
When a group comes back and says, I want to spend money that's 10, 10 years old.
Could I just finish?
Yep, go ahead.
Yeah.
So we don't expect it to be a big number because when we went through COVID, in the very early stages of COVID, we were very concerned about appropriations and funds available. Our Finance Director at the time and I met, the Board and I met at the time, and we did a thorough review of all of that. If memory serves correctly, the outstanding appropriations of articles back then was less than $2 million, I believe. However, that number is even lower from anything prior, say, to fiscal year '22. So we can account for fiscal years '23 and '24, and we are accounting for those prior years. The number is small and getting smaller, but I would argue that whether town meeting wants to do it or not, and to the objections, I think that's, that's fair and appropriate. But it is recognized as a smart financial practice, and I would, we would thank the Board of Library Trustees specifically, they didn't come to the town and say, give us more money and you figure it out. They said, we have actively pursued that under Article 37. So repurposing articles to try to get projects done is a smart way to do it. Town meeting rejection of that is something we can deal with. But the act and the presence of those do not constitute bad financial practices. On the contrary, we are allotted for smart financial practices.
I wasn't implying that.
No, no, I know, but, and my overall takeaway
I was just saying how much money is hanging out there.
There's a broader audience as well, but we will also have more details for town meeting on those questions.
Okay.
Just one follow up.
Sorry, go ahead.
Gary, I hear you loud and clear on the school, it's one of our biggest expenses. And we have talked about it and have agreed, once we get through town meeting, to start those conversations again. My hopes would at least that we would have something before town meeting next year. Because if Chatham and Harwich don't agree, it goes to the state and they figure it out. So first step is one town approving, one town not approving, and then it goes to the state. And to the point about waiting on the two and a half million, it sounds great to me, but I think we want to start negotiations with good faith. You know, they opened up their wastewater treatment facility for us. I don't think it would be a good message if we said, we're going to hold off on this, at least my opinion, we're going to hold off on this. Because we went into this negotiation in good faith.
Well, if it will compromise your negotiations, I wouldn't do it either.
Right. That's where my head's at. I just wanted to tell you where I was.
Thank you.
Thank you. Joe?
Well, I did neglect, I apologize. I can read the main motion under Article Five, but I do believe the, the 2.5 million is the total project value, not the obligation of the Town of Harwich. The Town of Harwich is lower than the 2.5.
Yeah, but by 25%, maybe.
Right, it's, right, but we're still not on the hook for 2.5 million.
No, I was talking about
Yeah, if you're going to talk, you have to come back up to the podium.
And I didn't mean to back and forth.
No, that, that's fine, I just, you know, want to make sure that people can hear it, so. Oh, Linda?
Linda Cipolla-Harwich, Port, thank you, Madam Chair. The last information that I know I saw on the $250,000 childcare program that we passed in this current year's budget was in dated November 2023. And I know that we have another 250,000 in this year's budget, I'm not arguing one way or another on it. All I'm asking for is, will, by town meeting, somebody stand up and say, you know, through our May town meeting, X number of families have been served, X amount has been done, so many children have been served? Because as a person sitting there, I'm being asked to spend a quarter of a million dollars, and I don't know how the other quarter million was spent. So I, I will respectfully ask that we have information at town meeting, pass it out, I don't care if you put it in your board packet next week, but I think it would be very helpful to the town to know that the program did or did not work, served or didn't serve people.
So I think that the report that was given in November, which, you know, and we had a report live here and to the Select Board, indicated how many applicants there were and moving forward what those monies would account for to the end of the program.
Would we, could we have an update on that to make sure that that's still the case?
Yes, and so we will have an updated report, but, but also that information was also provided to this Board, and I made sure that Finance Committee got that, just as an aside, they also have that information. But I'm happy to make sure that we get an updated report in time, in time for town meeting.
And I appreciate that it went to the Finance Committee and went to the Board, but that only counts for about 10 voters.
True, true. Well, we, it's, I guess
We're the ones paying the tab.
I guess my point is, Linda, like everything, it's accessible on the website as well, it's in a packet, so. But we can certainly make it more prevalent and we can have an updated
Which packet? I'll go look.
So you can go to the Select Board's packet, I believe, in November.
I'm asking for one that would be current information.
No, I understand that. We don't, I don't have, I'm not telling you I have a current report. I'm saying the, the report we have that I shared was from November. And what I'm saying is, when you look at the numbers and the stipends that were given and the number of families and the number of children specifically throughout the course of the year, unless anybody dropped out of nursery school, then, which is possible, people move and other things happen, but it allotted for those monies. But we can certainly have an updated report as well.
That would be appreciated. Again, because I think we deserve to know, an updated report, stuff does change, and those were all, did people, was there more money left over? Is there any, so yes, I would appreciate that so that the town can vote appropriately. But thank you.
John Shory, 153 Gorham Road, just a very, very quick question, and thank you for your time earlier. On Article Nine, the 2, the 2.5 million for the Montemoy renovation, middle school renovation project, is that going to be a capital outlay exclusion or a debt exclusion?
It's a debt exclusion.
And for how long?
I don't have their debt schedule currently in front of me, that can be something that can be detailed at town meeting.
Okay.
Or even at next week's board meeting.
Or ask at town meeting, or?
Yeah, I actually, I can, I can provide that information to the Board for next week. I hate to speculate and say I think it's such and such a number of years, you know.
I'm just curious on the interest accrued and that, that's all.
I, I don't have the specifics on the, the debt schedule. I believe that they wouldn't have the exact numbers until they actually go out to borrow. So they have estimates based on the current conditions, but those are not the final numbers until the money is actually borrowed.
That's great.
They can't borrow it until they get the vote.
Thank you.
But it's a debt exclusion, though.
It is a debt exclusion.
Question one.
Does anyone else have any other questions? Do any Board members, Michael?
Yeah, just a follow up, Kathleen, if you could get that for us, we could certainly share it with the public and then having it available for town meeting. I know they always send Dr. Carpenter and I believe their finance.
Yeah. We will also have Michael McMillan giving us another update on May 20th, I think, as long as he's available.
And then just one follow up comment from a previous speaker, and it was related to the sale of the land money, where it should go. There is a pretty extensive amount of work that's been done on that. Real estate and open space has brought that, those properties forward, and in their recommendation is always housing. So housing is definitely a component of that. And, and it's also another component of that is tax collection and getting things back on taxes. Open space for wastewater reduction, less that we have to sewer for, less build. So there's many, many elements to that. So it's easy to say where it should all go, but it's all going to go to the town by way of a lot of different avenues. So I hope everyone thinks about that on that article.
Thank you, Michael. Jeff, do you have anything?
I have nothing. Thank you all for being here.
Thanks, thanks for taking the time out of your evening to come. Appreciate the questions and we'll provide the information discussed this evening.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes, please.
Move to adjourn.
Second?
Moved in seconded, all in favor? Aye.